Good evening. Welcome to the Scottsville Town Council meeting for Monday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. My name's Matt Lawless. I serve as the Scottsville Town Administrator. This evening's meeting is held in compliance with Virginia Freedom of Information and the state's open meeting laws. We're meeting in person at the town hall, four oh one Valley Street. The meeting is open to the public and everyone is welcome to attend. Our meeting includes a public forum, but no advertised public hearings. The public is welcome to attend and participate in person as well as remotely. We have telephone and Zoom options to participate. If you're joining us in the future on our YouTube channel, thank you very much. The local time here now is three minutes until seven o'clock, the closest start time for our meeting. So I'll meet this while we continue to set up our meeting and cut a quorum together. If you skip ahead three minutes on your recording, you'll see us in order. Thank you.
Very good.
Seven o'clock. Time to start it. Yes, the court can call and roll, please. Uh, that's what your court, Eric, Chris, there, times, heights, pain, deal. Stan and Jordan have played in the week.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under law, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
I remember Tuesday, since the calendar was the approval of this agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, see if I can add something to the agenda this evening.
I would like to add David Banks.
Okay, I would like to add, we can call it six B. Um, I see six A is the, uh, called during, et cetera. I'd like to see if we could have a discussion on, on profits in general and also the recent profits related to the anniversary of the S U P.
Do we want to do that tonight or do we want to have a special meeting?
No, sir, I'm, I'm asking to do it tonight.
Probably be invited, Mr. District.
I'd like to do it tonight.
Mayor, I would ask if we not do that.
Now, let's say Mr. Payne has motions and the, so would you take the motion?
I move that we have a discussion on profits in general and the recent profits related to the anniversary of the S U P.
Maybe for a second. How is your discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I don't, I don't mind having a discussion. Um, but what do, um, I guess, what is the discussion? Like, do we want to talk about just what it is or the conditions of it? I know there are questions about.
Well, see, that's all that. That's what's supposed to come up in the discussion.
That was, yeah.
I, that's why we haven't taken, and don't want to say anything insane to you, so. I'm a little concerned by the last meeting. It's so confusing. Got in the last minute, we didn't know what it was. Uh, look, the attorney didn't know things out to it. I think that, um, I'd like to really have some guidelines and procedures for properties in the future as well, so that people aren't doing this last minute, embarrassing them again. I, I just don't think that's right. So I, I'd like to get some news, uh, like some stipulations down for what could be a proper, when it's presented, when it has to be officially said to us. And so we know what that effect, we're back to, yes, I don't like to do it.
Well, so, so I think it's a bad idea to do it tonight. And the reason I think it's a bad idea to do it tonight is that I don't think what's prepared to do it tonight. Um, you might be. You, but, but I will just say, do what terms of, would do what, uh, hold on. Uh, so what I'm suggesting is we do have a conversation about it when we do need it anyway, unless we would normally do. We would talk about the proper at that point. And we would consider our normal procedures. I don't like to brush procedures that we've been, have been doing. So I, I think it's a bad idea for us to do it tonight.
And I'll say, sir, that, um, this is normal procedure.
I don't mind having a discussion without it tonight, but I would like to kind of keep the focus on clarifying questions about the current one. I know there's a bigger discussion about the proper and procedure, which I think is appropriate. But I, I would like to just keep the discussion tonight focused on the, the one that's in progress.
Well, it's quite possible. You already had a long discussion about the discussion, what I proposed.
Yeah, no, I, I'm with you, Eddie. I just, that's like, admire for what it is.
Just have a vote by short hands, please.
Do we, uh, call, roll?
The roll call?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just work. Four?
Yes.
Chris, huh?
No.
Five?
Yes.
Piper?
Yes.
Thanks?
Yes.
And item six B.
Thank you.
Now, with that adjustment to the agenda and that we consent calendar approval will be given us for the past uh, November fourth, April twenty-first, and the three little five hours for November. Do I hear a large majority accept the consent calendar as now?
Seven hundred.
Yes, sir.
Second.
There, I agree.
All right.
You propose?
I, I oppose.
Are you opposed to the are you opposed now to the addition that you just?
No, um, no, sir, I, uh, had a brief discussion there about the minutes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make a comment, um, that I did have a meeting in the power of year. And, um, the minutes were adjusted, uh, properly, I believe, and, uh, I think we've always found. And, uh, I think that should be accepted. I have them. Um, and it's probably too late now, but, um, I've only had a week with the financial report. And I wanted to just run a test government service and invite Mr. Lawless to come meet with us and discuss that, um, not only the, what's in there, but, uh, the full package. Quite simple. Look, we've all heard of it. But I still invite Mr. Lawless.
Make sure that we go ahead and get with you at some point as we continue to put it on the discussion. Okay, public forum now. Anybody in the public here have anything we should discuss? One once, one twice. Public forum and backwards. Mayor and staff, of course, since we have supervisor and Chairman Price with us this evening, I'll, I heard her first if she has anything which has been part of you.
That being seen, please. I gotta thank you. Good for everybody. Happy holidays and very Christmas.
Thank you for joining us. Hope you have a nice holiday also. Um, Mayor's report is rather, rather short, uh. On December first, I went to a Boys and Girls Club function in, uh, Scottsville, at which, uh, scan and received an award for a community partner with the Boys and Girls Club. And I received an award for volunteer of the year. I, we're going to follow here, something to be better, we, we better be prepared. For, I mean, it's a lot of fun working with the Boys and Girls Club. I've had several events, uh, for, for, for the night. And, uh, either today, that's from the other place, today in the library of Boys and Girls Club, a part of the book giveaway for, uh, the Monastery. And that side room at the library was full of brand new books and children were coming from anywhere to get the free books. Uh, it was the Boys Club members and members of the community. It was all attended and, uh, it was sort of a high, high stock. Of course, uh, I think we all stood in Portland, later another, the holiday happening, this event on the tenth of the month. And, uh, with the planning division meeting is in the preserve, this one, uh, so that, that was basic to all I could do. Hold up. Think about a lot of things connected to the town. Uh, does Mr. Boyd with this evening?
No.
I think this was his time last week. Uh, two weekends, you have my report first. I mean, I know you have a report, but I think you like to report it for me. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, for allowing me to come this evening and, uh, share a little news about the police department this evening. As you can tell, we've had a couple of significant calls for service this past, uh, month. We responded to this James River Road for a female that's highly intoxicated. It was very cold that day. And, uh, one of our officers, uh, because of his diligence, was able to find her, rotate her work in a field to stop James River Road and get her home safely. She was very under the grasp for the weather. Pretty fearful that she would probably have some serious medical issues at the location of that money. Uh, you can see the next bullet there, we had two calls for service on page three for, um, some mental health calls for service. Uh, same individual. First morning, uh, we had to pick personally the custody on the D C O, we spent eleven hours at the hospital with her. And then the next week, we ended up having to, uh, go back, going through a brand new custody, on emergency custody, we already spent twelve hours. That's where we went, we were able to get her and, uh, transport her to the hospital. So those calls, much like our partners with Admiral County, A C P D sees them almost every day. They're probably do shifts up there to that box, uh, to, to just deal with mental health calls for service. So that's what I asked you when, when Chief Jeff was here, that was one of the big problems is getting out of state office to tie up the U V A for town. And we're not, still not getting any cooperation from U V A. Here is you going. Well, Mr. Mayor, I have had some communications with their lieutenant at the U V A. And they are in the process of finalizing an M O U and putting resources in place at the hospital where we can do a custody standoff with U V A, but we're not quite there yet. So, so that happens. He's very strong. I, I think they're very eager to make this happen. Uh, it looks like the governor has got some funding to propose, the U V A amendment to the project, the state fund it. So hopefully that'll help expedite what U V A needs to get, to make that happen. But I know they're eager to make it happen, but it's just, but we're just, it's a given. Definitely, yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, just the other day, we had a, uh, another hit and run here. Early morning, pickup truck comes through the town and sides like, uh, Mercedes on the Dallas street. Um, took the report. Thankfully, we did have some video that we were able to recover and, um, we've come out the next morning early and hopes that the person might come back, or they did come back. So we were able to make a stop, identify the driver, uh, get that person charged as well as, uh, get the victim of the hit and run the information for their insurance. So that was taken care of. Community engagements and community events. Uh, two of our officers, Barnett and Wood, participated in the Kids and Tops Holiday Shop event up at, uh, Berry Tree Shopping Center. Uh, we assisted this, S B P D, uh, assisted with the Santa Claus escort from Scottsdale Center to Canal Basin on Saturday. I know Matt and I spoke and that was certainly, uh, a great event all day Saturday. A lot of people in the town. Uh, as you can see here, uh, thus far this year, uh, thirty-nine community events that, that Police Department, uh, has participated in this year. I think that's one of the things. I think the top play, I know we love doing it, um, anytime we can partner with, uh, any of our community members who are not.
Well, that, I mean, that proactivity that's so appreciated because when you're out there and you're able to be in front of the community and show a positive opportunity for them to engage you, that is just wonderful. So thank you. I, I mean, you're kind of blowing the doors out, that, so keep it up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Uh, you can see our auxiliary officers, uh, have put in a, a number of hours this year thus far and, uh, saving the town, uh, cost savings of over twelve thousand dollars so far. Still continue some of our work on, uh, our department policies and procedures. Uh, we continue our work on the old jail. We've got one side of the jail cleaned and painted. Uh, myself and the officers have moved all of the rest of the stuff over to the painted side and now we've got to clean the other side and get that. So we're still working on the jail. It's a work in progress.
Should, do you kind of, when you're done with that, then you come up there and guys, and Tom, just support that this way?
Or can we have a tour?
I was actually just saying it'd be nice to see it before and after.
Yeah.
I, I, when we were doing the inventory, I did see what it looked like inside, but it might, it might be nice as part of the report to do before and after pictures, just for, for evidence, right?
I'm confused that I got a picture before. It was so full. Matt, remember, three and a half pickup truck loads of junk out of that old, uh, old jail. And there's still stuff in there that's gonna have to get. And so for sure, and after.
How, how many people can you put in the jail there?
How many can we?
Can you hold there?
Oh, we're not gonna hold.
Oh, you're not? Oh, it's not, it's not a, a real jail.
It used to be a jail.
So like, if you get a drunk, a drunk person, or you wouldn't put him in jail and say, everybody, no.
When you house prisoners or inmates, there's another whole ball of wax that has to go in.
I just want.
Prisoner in custody and things like that. So we don't want to get into that.
They included air duty.
Yeah, you're right. There you go.
Hey, Austin Bones might use it as an office space. But, uh, we, there are a couple of desks over there, um, and we thought, once we had gotten that cleaned up, we might set that desk up and we can use it as an office space, whatever the town and C fifth usually. Right now, our mission is just to make sure it's clean and presentable. So the weather got us before we were able to replace that window, that wood and other things, and it's bad.
Yeah.
So we're gonna replace all that, put a new air conditioning in the building, uh, and tilt it to where the water runs out this time instead of in and destroying everything on the inside of it. Um, I was able to complete my, uh, forty-hour, uh, C I T training, uh, last month. And, um, I attended the sexual assault response team meeting in December with, uh, our Commonwealth attorneys, uh, A C P D with a number of the, um, U V A staff on sexual assault responses. So we did that, um, calls for service. As counsel can see, uh, January through November, uh, S B P D was dispatched to twelve hundred eighty calls for service. Six hundred and sixty-nine of those calls for servers within the town of Scottville itself. When, how many went out, do it? Um, we were dispatched, uh, to six hundred and fourteen of those calls for service. So we're, we're still handling about ninety-two, ninety-three percent of the calls for service in the town. Obviously, the farthest, which has been a good thing. I was, uh, telling, uh, council member, uh, Basset, that, uh, I believe that that schedule change that we did early on when I took over your chief, uh, has really helped us address a lot of the calls for service. What I see with the calls for service that you're not getting to is early, early morning. It was thirty, five thirty in the morning, that's before I get on shift. So thank goodness we have, uh, Alabama, uh, P D to assist us here in the town. Our partner with A C P D really helped us out a lot when it comes to that type of stuff.
Greg, could I interrupt at this point, since you mentioned that? Any, um, progress that you knew of on the M O U with that law, please?
Uh, Mr. Payne, I talked with, uh, Assistant Chief Stoddard and I talked to him in the last month it was. And he said that they had the strikes language in the existing M O U and it was sent back to the county attorney and now it's been back in his office. So as soon as he gets the executive summary uh, over to the county attorney and through that process through, uh, to the, uh, county's board of supervisors for approval. We're still waiting, but he is working. Okay. Um, we've had, uh, two hundred full traffic stops. Hundred and sixty-five warnings and seventy-five citations. Uh, right now, we've had seventeen custodial arrests. And then we can see the, what I tried to do is go through and do a comparison from two thousand and nineteen to date on where we were as far as calls for service in the town of Scottsville itself. So you got it, Matt?
Yeah.
So that just gives counsel just an idea of the calls for service, uh, that we've handled in the town of Scottsville. Two thousand and nineteen was pretty high. And then you can see in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, when COVID was in, that was when calls for service dropped off. And now in twenty-two, you can see the calls for service are coming back up again. Um, sixty-six percent increase in twenty-one to twenty-two, but it's really not a fair comparison because of COVID, right? But, uh, we've been quite busy. I think. Comes in spurts, Mr. Cassette. I know you were having a talk earlier, but some days, it's from the time you start until the time you go on, some days it's good days, that I like to say. Yes, sir.
I, I'm not, I guess you don't keep track of it, but is there, is there, uh, trends in these call for service, uh, that, that that happen more frequently than others?
I'm very limited on accessing data. The system is not ours.
Okay.
Um, so I'm limited on what data I can pull. Um, most of our, uh, our calls for service from the public disorders, uh, some domestics in the town. But I'll try to do a little bit better job and see if I can drill down.
Yeah.
And get it for you. Uh, but it's very difficult to get some information.
Call for service should be just any complaint, somebody, a barking dog or a shotgun or, or somebody wandering around.
Something that we're required to respond to.
Okay.
I mean, it could be, uh, trash, a barking dog.
Okay.
Okay, um, thank you. I noticed the state was working least May, is that, may I thank them for me? Yes, sir. I saw it right after they, they, they stopped, uh, inbound. We, that young trooper stopped by my office the other morning, uh, they're working some, um, traffic enforcement overtime. And, uh, they've been down here, I'm happy to see him there, he does free jail in the little self-likes. Yes, sir. Also, I have had a citizen who, uh, who is known to be, um, a fear on my book, the books, the other night, to tell me that the bushes at the corner of Jimmy Gible Road had hardware make low vehicles. It's hard to see all kind of traffic. And that there was an accident there recently, there was. So he just wanted me out, told me I would get the guy, he thought, oh, he said he got, put in the garage, threw it away, it's pretty dirty. Kill him back and do what he did of this. Yeah, I'm not sure that that crash was because of the, the trees, but wouldn't hurt us then. The springtime starts, I thought it was, so. I'll, I'll, I'll get on it with that. Okay, so, okay, yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Just had a quick question, um, with regards to the, um, C, uh, C I T training.
Yes, ma'am.
Are other officers going to have that same forty-hour training as well? Or are all of our officers gonna have that?
Wonderful question. And out of the, uh, one complaint that we had gotten that you're aware of, I was able to contact all of the former officers and they were all trained. Um, I was the only one that hadn't been trained.
Okay.
Where I come from, uh, officers, but if this, officers that respond to call for service before the trial. And then the officers were sent before commanders. But now that I've had an opportunity to be here, I will afford an opportunity to go C I T. I'm happy to say all of our officers are C I T trained. Our two auxiliary officers are not. However, they don't ride with, by themselves. They're always in the car with one of us. So there's always a C I T officer that responds to a mental call for service from Scottsville.
Excellent. Other question was, um, in that same vein, do we have? Um, and I know when you first took on the role, we spoke very briefly on the sidewalk about this, but never really too much about it, but the crisis intervention training and then this one about, um, the female being, uh, transported to E V A twice, kind of brought it to the forefront of my head again, um. Funding for any part-time police employee who is not an officer, whether that be a social worker, somebody who in, in events that not doubting anybody's ability to handle it, but somebody whose training is specifically for mental health crises, domestic abuse, homelessness, where it's not necessarily a criminal thing that's happening, but more of a, a crisis that's happening. Is there any plans at any point that we might have somebody on board who would be able to ride out with those calls?
I know that, that the bigger departments, our regional partners are working on the Marcus slur, uh, which does have that element of law enforcement in plain clothes, uh, mental health folks, can you D S S, fire department, the rescue folks. Uh, Scottsville, because of its size, is really exempt from that process. We are not mandated to do it. Um, I would suggest that counsel is interested in something like that. Um, that, that's a much bigger, uh, conversation that maybe, uh, I will probably have to have with A C P D to see if one of our folks might be able to fit into that. I don't think that they've gotten very far. Maybe Mr. Price would know a little bit more than me. One with Mark Slur and some of that mental health research I've heard, it gets one side of the refund a minute.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. Uh, it's been approved in our budget. Uh, I don't have the interest whether, uh, personnel have been hired. If we are moving towards that, it matters.
And I apologize. I didn't mean it. It sounds like I put you on the spot and I definitely did not mean it like that. It just, it was in my head. I didn't know if we were fully staffed budget-wise, what we had for staffing and if it was a question that could even be brought up, but.
Police Department is fully staffed right now. Um, it would certainly be another F T E that, that counsel would have to consider with the police department. Um, I'm not sure how we would be able to plug and play with our regional partners or not. I think it's a bigger, broader conversation if we have you know, the training, proper training, they would probably welcome the help. Uh, but I think it's a bigger question that we have to explore versus just me coming up and saying, yeah.
Like how we have the auxiliary officers, maybe we could have like an auxiliary social worker or something.
You know, our auxiliary officers, I have offered up the C I T, but because they do other things, uh, it's very difficult for them to commit to the four-year training. Uh, but I'll still try to keep getting them into the C I T training if they can attend. They can, um. I, in reading, uh, the, the requirement of a In reading uh the requirement of the Marcus Alert, it's going to require just more than a police officer. And a social worker type person, they're talking about police, fire, rescue. A whole uh assortment of response to a mental health crisis, so. I'm not sure that we have the ability, but. I'll leave that decision to our council members and. Uh, there is an FTE that, that you want to dedicate, then we can explore it more.
Sweet.
Other questions for you? Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all us.
Thank you, Council. Um, quite a bit of our staff work this month has been related to the major land use matters that are before you. But there are a few other bits of news consistent with the staff work that don't line up with our committee reports later. I had a little bit of economic development news to report. Um, you may have seen or heard coming soon signs or groundbreaking beginning around the shopping center area uptown. They did have the um first bit of site work beginning for the Tiger Fuels market. Um, council permitted that um special use permit almost two years ago. So note that the, the site work and the detail engineering, the ARB consultation on landscaping, all takes a good while, but they're, they're eager to begin work and get started. Um, I don't think the old house is going to be able to move, that was a goal that they had. But some historic salvage will come out of that building, so maybe um, uh, you know, like interior carpentry, we'll find, we'll find a good home. There are coming soon signs up and announcements for a small format Rite Aid pharmacy. Um, smaller retail footprint than what you see on their big standalone stores. Um, but we'll have an onsite nurse for a little bit more primary healthcare and consultation. That means some of our community uh public health needs, although there's a lot more to do on that. The other coming soon sign is a tobacconist in Big Shop. I don't know those folks or what's going on with it, but I made sure that the property owner paves to the new tenant about how the town's cigarette taxes work. Um, we want to be welcoming and, and support the investment in the space, but also make sure that everybody knows our, our tax compliance.
Where's that gonna be?
Yeah, um, it's the, I think it's one of the former antique.
Shopping center.
Yeah, in the, in the shopping center and one of the. Yes.
Right. Okay. Okay. That's great. Yeah. That things are being used.
Yes, um, so, but those, those two are good examples of the buy right commercial development process, that it works through the landlord. And there's no engagement with our office until almost the business is open, when we check on business licenses and tax compliance. Um, but both the pharmacy and the tobacconist for buy rights is in the shopping centers. Uh, we have budget research beginning, and I look forward to some of the consultation government services committee on um financial trends, spending priorities. At, at this point, I'm looking at overall economic trends, what we think the cost of everything is doing. Um, kind of backing into our budget that way. I'll build a model first of if we keep doing everything the same, what will it cost? And is there a surplus or a gap that we need to deal with? But at the same time, I encourage council to think about their goals, like, like the question that you asked in the science of. If we were gonna add a service, what might that cost? And um, we can talk about those in the next three, four months as well. And if we're gonna change anything in our existing services, this is the time to raise those ideas and we can start the staff work on what might it cost to do so. Um, so please, please be thinking about that. Um, along those lines, um, we had a little bit of um email and meeting conversation about council goal setting, some strategic planning and facilitation. Um, my, my go-to professional resource for that is at the um UVA Institute, the Weldon Cooper Center. Uh, they do a number of on-call consulting opportunities and one of them is in exactly this area. The um director of that center is a, a former town manager and well understands the situation that we found ourselves in. Um, he highly recommends that we work with um one of his on-call consultants. And Suzette Denzlow, she was the clerk for the House of Delegates for many years, is doing this in her sunny retirement. She has tremendous experience with state law and local government operations. Um, and is very well prepared to put together a, a day-long workshop to help us do that goal setting. And she has um, uh, she knows the procedures of government, uh, exhaust, is well, and with all different kinds of committee proceedings and. Helping to, helping bodies that kind of achieve a consensus and several goals. Um, so I'd invite you to consider if that's um.
Is there any possible?
Yes, um, in the neighborhood of four thousand dollars for, for the day, which I think is reasonable. I believe that's less than we paid the last time we did this in twenty eighteen, working with um UVA's um organizational cover. It produces the cost, it's less than some of the time the consultants that we've gotten for sure.
Well, I just want to mention, uh, we have a, a professional mediator.
Indeed.
And she would offer to do it free, so I don't know if she wants to do it for a day, but I. That might be where, that might be worth starting there, uh, of course, that was a lot of money. But if we have it, uh, or maybe we gotta build both, but anyway, it's something to consider.
Sure, one other thing, just to follow up on your point is a good one is. When we. Was it Matt?
Eight, twenty eighteen.
Oh, you did before?
Yeah.
That same, same thing?
Yeah, so that, that session's. One of the helpful thing, what, how would we do it, you know, whether it's somebody here. What that ended up doing is a lot of. We were kind of able to hash out the priorities of, of the entire council and. It was really helpful and I think that would be whichever way we do it.
Yeah, that sounds.
That or that somebody.
Definitely needed.
The opportunity for us to kind of get together.
Yeah.
Kind of patch out the priority. It, I, I would say of the, I think of doing this twelve years, that particular day might have been one of the most important things. It really helped us most of the time where we just don't have the time to dialogue and over a lot of councils, that particular train. And that's the one who put that together, so. So again, maybe, I, I don't know, right? But whatever it is, I think having that meeting, whenever the timing is, it's good.
Um, there were, um, there were a couple of um good news opportunities. And in addition to the, um, the mayor's award, um, the town received a um community preservation award from Preservation Heavmont. Um, in recognition of staff and the ARB, um, all of the different types of buildings and types of stories that we've been able to preserve. So I was um really honored to uh visit with the Preservation Heavmont folks back on December third and receive that award. Recognizing the staff work and volunteer work with the ARB. Um, we, we do a lot in historic preservation, um, with um not much resources, but a lot of community expertise that helped it. Um, I'm also headed to Richmond on January fourth to help with the Virginia Municipal League's elected officials training. They're doing a focus on um town operations and training new town council members. And they'd like me to train them on local government budget process. I did that last year for all of the cities and counties and towns and it was very well received. Um, and they decided to break it up with a city group, a county group and a town group. So I'm looking forward to focusing on teaching about how town financial practices work. Um, and it's a, it's a credit to your financial management and the type of budgeting that we do that larger towns in the state want to learn from us.
That's definitely an honor though, Matt, too, that you're invited. That's for the rule.
It's, it's an excellent training program, thank you. I'm, I'm proud to do the, the one hour on budgeting, but there's more um law and policy topics there. And uh they used to label it as new elected officials, but they've recognized that everybody can use their pleasure. So if anybody wants to travel with me, that'd be great to do.
The cost for that, is that? A covered cost or is that an out-of-pocket expense?
We, we take care of um council professional development on things like that, we can, we can sign up for it.
So I'd very much like to, to go to that.
True. Happy to answer any other questions about staff work.
There are other questions from.
So any update on the, the Burt's developed? Uh, cause I've, you know, I've really, I've mentioned a while back, but trying to have somebody review the environmental. Uh, part of that for the hill, of the hillside and the holding pond. With us, council and, and where they are in that process, it's, that's been, what, eight months, I guess? So what do they, have they talked to you about a plan for that or?
The last step that that project saw. At the town government was its subdivision ordinance compliance. And planning commission did that um back in the summer. The subdivision hasn't formally gone through yet, so it's still, it's still one big parcel. And the site work and engineering doesn't begin, they won't break any ground until after those lots are divided. Um, so I don't know the timeframe. The next milestone that we'll see would be the legal subdivision of the lots and then they could proceed with the, um, the site plan and utility work. I did speak with um the county staff about. Who on their team might be the best person to um kind of give an overview about how town and county staff work together on things like. Environmental and stormwater compliance, they're trying to figure out the best person to represent all the different pieces of community development like that. They have a number of specialists on that. Um, but I think that would be a great uh work session topic in the future, so I'll, I'll keep working on that. Um, but who's who and what's going to be.
Matt, Matt, one of the things, just to follow up, I mean, it's brought up, council opinion has brought it up. Right, a number of times, the issue of the minutes and kind of the importance of. Kind of a timeliness and the thoroughness of it and anyways, I, I just wanted to know from you, I know there's been a lot of. Different activities that have been gone on at different times with different demands. Maybe if there's more communication, we need to hear other help you need or, or just, I don't know, how do you see that issue at the moment? Cause I know some people in the public have also expressed a concern on that, so just whatever thoughts you have.
Um, we, we can adjust. Um, it's a, it's a question of the priority setting, um, and changing those workflows to meet your expectations. Um, I've seen some places do a quick report on follow-up from the meeting, like some bullet point notes, so here are the actions taken. Um, easier to share and that produces quicker than the minutes. Um, but in the past, the town has outsourced the transcription part of it. We could go back to that and that would free up some, some staff time for other pieces of it. Um, it, it's to that question about budgeting of, um, help us understand your priorities and we can let you know what kind of costs have involved to make this thing happen.
Cause it, cause it is a legitimate concern, I guess, the main thing too. That might also be something even as we talk about in our, you know, planning meetings, you know, next year, whatever we do, it is to figure out as we adjust. Either what y'all do or the timing, but I think in general. That we're on, that we get on the same page in terms of our understanding and then also. If, you know, like, okay, this week it is late for, but generally they're on time, so just, just that we have a clear understanding, so.
That's right, um, and those, um. Meeting those deadlines is important to everyone in the community, um, that there, that there be consistency on, here's when you can expect these things to be done. From monthly minutes to the annual audit, we want to be current on those things and um, once you fall out of that pattern, it's hard to get it right again.
Is that a legal requirement?
There is.
I think it's a ten business day requirement.
There's a legal requirement that once your minutes are adopted, that they be posted promptly. So the, the thing that we just did to approve the minutes, we have to get those up online quickly. Um, there's not a requirement for how quickly or slowly the minutes are produced.
And it's not just, you know, this uh present town status, you know, as, and you probably will know this happens from time to time. It's not the first time.
And it's more a question, like you said, too, as we talk about it. What procedures do we all want to do as, you know, the council, what, what are our? What is this acceptable, not acceptable, sorry. But it's a legitimate question, it's a legitimate concern.
Here's. I have a question about, there's a number of maintenance uh ideas that I've heard from other people and we've, at our committee um about, but during the winter, we, we know there's problems with the. The grass and stuff during the spring itself, but there's a lot of things that could be done in the winter. Do you want that from our maintenance committee or do you want individuals to, to go to you, like, like for example, um. Uh, you know, this, the curbs, the curves need to be painted yellow, you know, or the, you know, markings for the, things like that, there's some painting that needs to be done. Uh, should we just give you a list and as a maintenance committee or should we do it individually, I mean, as, as needed, or how do you want to do that?
I, either or both is fine, um, we can, we can receive those kind of work requests from anyone in the community.
Okay, and then you'll pass them on. Direct Cody to do.
Yes, and we can, we can address those priorities.
And some might cost money, like somebody mentioned the other day, how about uh? The stairs, why not, you know, seal the stairs or polyester thing, the, the stairs coming up here. That might cost some money to get, you know, some of that, but some of these are, we might already have, it's just like, say, the curves, you know, digging up the. The dirt along the curves and stuff, that would be good to do during the winter, you know, so then you don't have weeds growing up on it.
There's something that maybe you're following, when you just said council would be, when Mr. Quick brought up his. List, I know, and you double-checked it, some of those things, that is, I don't know where that is at the moment, but that's something that. Uh, you know, citizens and others have taken a lot of time to look at and see what needs to be done. And I, I myself want to follow up with him at some point, but that being said. That is another. Mechanism that's already in motion and, and that's also something too that we're gonna have to talk about as we think of, you know, the future.
I could send you that, we have that, but that's mostly a spring ball list. That list if you want, because we have a blank copy of that, that cabinet, what cabinet has it?
Well, there's been, over the years, there's been.
Yeah.
Number of different, you know, Laura Lucy had things and she did, and the Snots had things, I mean, there were a number of different ways.
Yeah, this is a.
Things that she did, she said, so they have different ways.
But this one's really workable, it's really a, a tool, I like, it's just not a list of things.
Thank you, Jay, thank you for your service. Many reports, we're gonna start on, we had an ass perceptive. You'd like to tell about how successful, how they're happening today, what that stuff really was.
I, yeah, I was told a very, uh, very fun event and I saw some of the video from that as well. Uh, we're gonna start getting back into our fundraising mode here soon. The last one's a pretty great success for the first time. Cover a majority of our initial. Funding, you know, it was about to, so anyone has a project, they want to do some fundraising for it, might do some. Maybe concert or something down, it's about in the park, kind of show all the work that's done there. I haven't gone close up to it, but what I've seen from the roadside was. So I'm pretty wrong.
Said finished?
I'm not sure if it's.
It's got a painting, it just looks like it. They probably need to, I mean, I, I look at it pretty regularly, they probably need to lock those doors. Because I could see somebody going in there and just trashing the place again, I, I mean, those doors are what, they're closed, you go open, you know, they, they have latches where you could lock them, but I think. Just to be safe, I think they ought to, they ought to do that, we ought to get some locks for that.
Any questions for Mr. Cassette? About ARB.
Yep, uh, we had a light agenda. Month, um, the major issue was, was the demolition of the property upon hardware, which is, was historic for me, it's my first demolition with the ARB. Um, demolition is not something ARB likes or wants to do. Um, but in this instance, uh, it was adjudicated to be appropriate, the property owners here to see, uh, the property, uh, for a number of years has been ready. For the ARB inventory, um, part of the, the overgrown, the tree avenue is going through the middle of it. Um, and we met, I don't know, three years ago. With a member of the estate, cause of the property sort of being divided up and so there was legal questions about who had. Sort of the legal authority to make a decision about the property, we've been in advance about that until just recently. And so um as part of our meeting on this one, we approved the demolitions, but I, I do want to just. For the public to hear what the ARB considers under a demolition. Uh, the ARB can ask that property be demolished, um, if it meets certain criteria, we did not, um, do that in this case, the property owner came forward about it, but. Um, in adjudicating whether a demolition should happen. We consider whether or not the building is an architectural, is of architectural or historic interest. And if its removal would be a detriment to the public interest. Uh, whether or not the building would qualify, if they actually their local historic landmark. Uh, whether or not the threat of retention of the building would preserve or protect a historic place. And lastly, whether or not plans of future use of the site are appropriate to the location in the district. Um, and this, this one did not trip any of the historic interest or landmark categories and the property owner is going to continue to use it as a, as a garden. Um, and it will remain zone as residential, so, um. We felt that all those things tripped the, the switch, so, but I want to give you an update about that, cause that is significant and an opportunity to share on the, of the demolition process. Work should come forward for this body again.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Paul? Bruce Thor or representative to the planning commission?
Mr. Mayor, as I reflect on Christmas, the season of good cheer, I think. I, I will simply keep my comments short, but just to note that. The planning commission is quite in the center of a lot of things happening and there's a lot of things I could say that I'll leave till next year, but in the. The season of good cheer, I will simply wish everybody a wonderful holidays, wonderful Christmas and we'll have lots to talk about in the new year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Mr. Burt still? The science? Besides?
We are actually not meeting this month, we were not able to get a uh. Day that that worked for everybody with with the holidays, and we decided to just. Call a hiatus until the new year, so I haven't, I have no updates for you to tonight.
Just remember if you need any help from anybody on the state behalf.
I appreciate you.
Mister Hyson got anything for us?
You're probably too much, but I'll just kind of go over some of our projects we're on and some of, some of the things we want to, want to do next year. I'm just gonna read some of them, okay, we're doing the web design, we got a, we got a project. Status report with the government services, we got about ten projects. Um Ms. Morrison is working on the the web, the, you know, and that's an ongoing project to to make the internet. And our website better, and get some interns in there uh and try to uh, and if we get some budget, we can kind of re redo the website.
You're talking about the town website?
Yes, the town website.
Thank you, that's great.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's good, it needs so much work and and there's a lot of. A lot of ideas out there that we're gonna do, but some of it's gonna cost some money, but. What the big thing for me has always been having a a really clear announcement page. And have a a events calendar, you know, those are a couple of things that that we get them from different sources, but to have something and make it usable. But anyway, the web web design's ongoing, um town maintenance, we're gonna continue with that and uh. Uh one of the couple of things we're looking at is uh later on is to have um. Get for performance review of the town maintenance and all all staff that work for the town. And have, you know, uh discussions about evaluations for the for the all the staff here. Um we started an impact analysis and the concern was a fiscal analysis for any kind of development or whatever. And uh the the question was, is there, is there been a fiscal analysis and really hasn't been? Um and like the current development developer, uh Echelon, they've done that in some towns. They actually went to that town and and did a thorough or had an independent person do an analysis to see what. So we've heard, you know, it's gonna make the town money, it's gonna break the town. Um. The the budget review, and this is for next month, we would like to get the budget uh in the future. To be a plan versus actual budget, and I don't, I'm not really first on budget thing, but the the way, the format of the budget apparently is not. Readable, or is that uh is informative, I should say, as if it's uh planned versus actual, see what, you know. Because, you know, we have. Been living pretty well with uh the stimulus and they're gone now. So get the plan versus actual budget uh for the future. Um couple of other things, we're gonna, we're gonna look at the grants. All the grants that have been here, and I guess there's no grants now, but some of the old grants we want to look at. Um and then we're, the big thing for the this next six, seven months is the D M V. Uh we want to get some, to see if it's uh how how much we're losing. Uh and if there's any ideas for generating revenue. And to just determine, I guess, if we want to continue with that next year, so that's it.
Just a question on the D M V, that's very legitimate.
Yeah.
What's the time frame that you, that you know?
I think it's August, I think it's August, it's two, two years, it'll be in August.
You have a lot of stuff there, is that something, is that one you're spending more time on the D M V?
Well, we've done some of it, uh I could, we could turn you over to some of our uh. Uh people who've done that analysis of that, but uh. From what I understood, I mean, I I don't know much about, but we lost eighty thousand the first year. And this year, I don't know if we're gonna lose that much, or how, but I know we're not gonna make a pop, so it, you know, it goes to. It, you know, it's determined whether. And we looked at many different places, and a lot of places aren't doing that well with D M V.
Sure.
So uh, I mean, it's a great idea, but I think sometimes you gotta know when to fold them, you know.
Yeah, I appreciate the work.
But the D M V is a, you know, it's a great asset, but it's. I think there's a way, maybe we could generate, advertise for it to get more money, um because I heard this, they were lining up in Fort Union. And maybe put a sign there, said we also have one in Scottsville, come come plus, but anyway, uh that's, that's a concern with the uh the D M V. And then, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I hope I'm correct. The government D M V site is still showing us. By appointment only, I do see that our town site has been updated to not say. By, you know, like walk-ins welcome or however the verbiage is now, you know, it's it's on our town site. But um if you go onto like D M V dot org or whatever it is, it still says by a plaintiff only, like.
Yeah, I've brought that up three months. The other concern, I'm, I hate to say this too, but.
Quick question, do you know council opinion, just a quick question, is that, is that the state, Matt, or who is?
That is the state uh D M V site. Every D M V and every D M V selected is listed. And since uh Scottsville appeared on that site, it said by appointment only. And you remember, you know, months ago, we thought it would be better just to do away with the appointment only, basically, because we didn't have the volume. Of people coming in, I may have come in at that time, a couple of weeks after that. And even in D M V, they were still telling people about appointment only, I wouldn't have sat for myself. So I got it, you know, staff and said, let's get Virginia D M V to change that. That's been over three months ago and it hadn't, hadn't happened yet.
I know who'd ask about that.
Well, let's, let's get it done, that, I mean, it's time, you know.
I've heard a lot of positive feedback about the D M V recently. Because it is convenient.
Yes, it is.
So that's something to make profitable.
Yeah.
That's a good asset in town.
Uh I had one uh one of our residents saying they had never been through a D M V process as fast as right here to get the courage.
That's great, yeah.
You need to do what begins, they keep it focus. Uh any other, any question or the questions?
Um, well, the last thing, the last thing is uh, we're gonna look at the, you know, H H R policies and procedures uh. And uh and one, that was one of the ones I I've talked with few people about, about having a uh. A strategic priority uh meeting. And uh Ms. Morrison said she would do that, that part, that might be different than what we were talking about before, but um to, you know, to talk about strategic priorities in the town.
Did you say H R?
Yeah, human resources, yeah, yeah. Um we look at those policies and procedures too, and the the H R policies. And I apparent, and I I I still don't really understand it all, but I guess apparently the D M V are really kind of talent employees too. So I guess they need to be evaluated and um, I don't know how that works, but they're town employees and they're also D their D M V employees, but are they paid through us or through D M V?
Good, good questions, so we're under contract with the state to provide the service. And the staff and all of the expenses come through the town. So our personal manual, our um payroll schedule, our direct code, everything like that. We do the work to the specifications of the state. And they provide the training so that titles decals everything are processed the way they want. We we process those transactions, send them to the state, and then they pay us a commission back. So they're, they're our employees trained to do work the way the state wants it.
But they're, they're, they get their money from the state or from from us?
Their, their paycheck says towns got settled, and then on a monthly basis, the town account gets a reimbursement commission around the state for the training actions. But the the payment hits our call first. Is that clear?
Is that a hundred percent reimbursement?
No, the the commission rate is a small fraction of the value of the of the transaction, so someone might um. Pay a a thousand dollar sales tax on a used car that they that they train hands here. We'll send that thousand dollar check to the state and we'll get forty five dollars back. But mission makes a while, yeah.
You know, the one, one concern I have, I don't, I don't know how that works, but I noticed the the office is closed, like twelve thirty one for lunch every day. And I'm, I'm just wondering if that's the best thing to do, because that's when people, you know, during their lunch hour, they go there, so maybe. Maybe they can stagger their lunch or have a lunch at a time when, you know, eleven o'clock or one o'clock. Cause you know, if I was working and I wanted to go to the D M V, I would go during my lunch hour, and if they're closed during that time, I just, you know, that's kind of like takes away. Business, I would, but anyway, it's something for them to think about.
Any other questions for Mr. Hyson or from Mr. Hyson? Was they, you have anything they had to go to the services or public safety or anything?
No, I want to say, we need to, you know, numerous times.
If two people see an accident, they go see, they'll be in different place, and they'll pick up on something that he.
I'm sure I forgot the last one.
No, I think you did a good job.
Move on to item number six, the call for the public hearing, we zone any special use permit for Echelon Resources, three hundred.
Should we do the proffer first, you think? Okay, I was thinking, can we flip flop pepper, I believe B made these into A and wouldn't duplicate the discussion. Is that okay with everybody?
If I have a problem with.
Well, I do, just me to say, maybe further explain my objection before, because it does have to do with flipping it. If you all remember last week. We, when we talked about it, we actually absolutely needed our town attorney, so I feel like if our town attorney was here tonight, we could have talked about it. But since we don't have our town attorney, I read the code, you can read the code, we can all read the code, what it says. But without our town.
Well, hasn't he analyzed it by now?
No, what I'm saying is, if we're gonna have a conversation about it, so we would really want his advice to talk about it, and that's all I'm saying. And we can talk about it, we already, we already agreed to talk about it, I'm simply saying that, but since he's not here. We're kind of talking live, is what I'm saying.
Well, I think, I think the issue is maybe, is it legal or not, that's the only thing we need to know.
I'm saying, but he's not here.
I'll, I'll take the position that this discussion may give us questions for the attorney.
Great, let's flip it.
That's, that's what I'm saying. Alright. So we're gonna talk about profits first. And um right off the bat, I want to say I'm disappointed in Mr. Bowling, he's a good friend, but. I'm disappointed that he wasn't properly prepared last Monday to um be a part of the meeting. Um he did not have a copy of the um new profits, according to what was said that night. Um it had been said in two hours, you, you know, profits came to me by way of email, you push a button, you get them to you. So he should have had a copy, and number two, he would have had time to bone up. On the particular codes that I quoted, so I just want to say that I'm I'm disappointed that he was. Uh you're prepared for that. Um I still take, maintain the same position, uh talking about the new profits that were uh. Put in by Echelon, that um they are improper. And what I would uh mainly concerned about is. The next special hearing, now uh. Matt, what was the timeline you gave us, the soonest we could have a a public hearing?
Um it's. It's about three weeks.
Three weeks from?
From the time you call it.
From the time.
From the time you call it. I need to, I need to give notice to the paper, so a couple of days for um the print order. And then the ad runs for two successive weeks, and then the meeting has to be five days after the second day, so that gets you about three weeks.
Okay, I I missed that part. Okay, so we we know the proper way to advertise it, now advertising it, you know. According to our last meeting, we have to determine when we're gonna get a analysis and recommendation. Uh and we we all talked about that, so. There was talk, there was no agreement, there was no vote. That this would be outsourced to a third party, it was only conversation, in fact, I went back and watched the video. And yeah, it was just a conversation. I would like to see our town administrator and the um town attorney, when he gets his notes together. To uh properly evaluate this and give us a recommendation, uh just like they did the first set of prophets. Uh and it won't cost us anymore, I don't think, I think. You know, I I know you want to defer for whatever reason you had, maybe get a fresh eye on it, but last problems, you know. Were handled that way, I think these could be true.
But I, but I, I I was getting a sense from our discussion that we did want it outsourced so that it wasn't. Our own people, that having a third party do would be more impartial.
Well, that's why we're having this discussion now.
I know, so, but I mean, I'm good with having management do it, because I trust their their opinion and adjudication. So I don't, I don't feel the need to have a dead elsewhere, because I trust their expertise. But I'm also open to having a third party do it, if that gives people a greater sense of confidence about it.
Oh, but we we really don't have um. A a timeline there, you see, the 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 public wants some answers, especially after Monday night's fiasco. Um so. This, I I I just suggest we try it this way, and and if if uh. Matt, you sit a bond, the town attorney said, you know. Says, you know, maybe if somebody else can handle it, we can do it that way, but right now, we we we've got a week. And nothing has been done. And um.
That's good with me, I just want to make sure that we are, that we feel good about that, because when people come up here. And tell me that our town staff don't know what they're talking about, I want us to be able to say, no, 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 we trust our town staff and we trust our town attorney. To give us the proper adjudication of the result.
So what do you guys make the cost of third party review, Matt?
Oh, um I I have already started this review myself, so I'm only, I'm only looking at a couple of hours, um dropping a couple hundred dollars.
Couple hundred for third party.
To get, to get a review of mine and Mr. Bowling's draft. We'll do our work and then get with the um zoning administrator who helps our planning commission regularly, so she knows our practices. She she can give it a final reading and let us know if we're off base, but the document that you get will have. My name on it is your zoning administrator with concurrence from Jim Bowling and Maxie Brown.
Okay, so that leads into uh the rest of my discussion. I'm I'm glad to take a breath, someone else has something to say.
I I do, but can we uh go to the developer and have them sign something saying, this is. Our final proffer, or there is no more proffers to be. I I worry about them coming up with another idea, you know, shortly before the next public hearing, say, well, we put another proffer on the table. And then we have all these people here and they're gonna say, I'm sorry, there's a new proffer. I I think we need to have received intention, we'll protect ourselves and also just to be considerate to the public for future too, that. Proffers have to be done, you know, or submitted two weeks in advance, or they're, they're not, they're not.
Yeah, I I would like to see sort of this calendar of what we all want to see with proffers in the future, because I don't want to repeat.
Yeah, that was embarrassing, embarrassing.
Have some just, you know, either a timeline or, you know. Take it apart a little bit, I mean, I don't have to settle on anything necessarily, but I'd like to see. Cause I think we're all a little upset by that, so.
Yeah, there's nothing stopping them from just every month, Friday before, putting new and profits on the table.
Indeed, and many localities have proper policies. But places that are actively using them have figured out exactly this problem, and many places have proper policy. Properist policies that set exactly those kinds of standards, I've seen some of them even where the. They, they challenge the applicant to write the first draft of this progress analysis. And prove that their proffer is reasonable.
And Al Malkin has that in place, I believe.
Indeed, um and and shift that burden to proof a little bit, um the Scottsville's in. The unfortunate situation of this being our first, so we're all running it on some of the biggest series of the government. I, what I, I think it would be very helpful if council could provide. Staff and legal with your expectations, um what what you look for, however, I'm. Very reluctant to prejudice this process by changing the rules in process, um I. I wouldn't, I couldn't recommend that we adopt a proffer's policy right now, that might prejudice the applicant.
Well, that leads me to my my next statement, because what's been submitted already, you know. You can't grand follow that in, that's, that's one of your words, I guess. Okay, well, we can avoid that, so, and I've got, I've got um. A couple of motions I'd like to make at this time, if.
Say something for you, but.
Yeah, no question.
I was looking at proffers too, and 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 uh, I don't, the the guy who's who, Echelon guy, he he submitted the proffer, right? And uh from what I read about proffers, it has to be submitted by the the landowner. And if he's not the landowner, then how does he do a proffer without um legally, you know, without. Is that right?
Let me just respond to this for a second, so, so I I just want to say this carefully. We can all read the code, we can all have thoughts. And Mr. Bullock actually said related to before, if we were gonna talk about proffers. Be, if we were on this particular subject, if we're gonna talk about policy. And and we're gonna actually talk about enacting a policy of. and, and we're gonna actually talk about enacting a policy of proffers at the moment without our town attorney, that's crazy. So I will just say, I tried to be nice related to Christmas, we've seen this side of the table do lots of crazy things in the last. But I'm just gonna say, I'm just gonna say again, if we don't have the town attorney here, so if, if we're gonna actually have a conversation and we're gonna now adopt a proper policy without our town attorney, that's not very smart. Not a very smart practice, because what we're doing is our town attorney is the one who advised us. I don't, if he was here, it'd be great. We could have, we could have this conversation with the town attorney whenever that is. I think that's a legitimate issue. I think it's totally legit, but I think it's important that we have the particular debate, whether we say it's one week or two weeks or five weeks or whatever, whatever we do. But to do it without him, that's just bad public policy. Well, no one's making a motion to make an policy right now, but I think, but Bill has asked a clarifying question. And so we might as well record it, because we're gonna come back to this.
Yeah, well, I can, I think I can answer Bill's question. Um, on the application for the uh, rezoning and the S U P, um, at this um, Lower Verstree LLC, as the applicant slash owner, as we determined the other night, uh, Southern Homes and Echelon have bought no properties. Dr. Hertz still the owner. And on his website, and I know websites don't get updated, but on his website, he is the only officer in that LLC. And he also shows as an agent. Um, that may or may not be the case, but that's what's on his website. Now, the representative from Echelon is listed on that same application as the agent. So Epsilon, you know, representative of can speak for Dr. Hertz. In fact, I believe he's uh, able to sign there. We might want to require a document from uh, Lower Verstree LLC saying um, that in fact, this representative from Epsilon is my agent. Now, just flip the coin. This same Echelon is also in partnership with Southern Homes, as they stated the other night. So they're the buyer. So what you have is Echelon in the middle acting on behalf of the buyer and the seller. Um, when I got divorced, my wife and I didn't have the same attorney. So, you know, that wouldn't work there at all. I'm saying, you know, it's, it's nothing illegal about it that I know of, but Epsilon is representing um, both as an agent and a partner. And now, um, at the risk of uh, appearing crazy, um, I would like to make a motion at this time that we put a fourteen day deadline on when an applicant can submit profits or review by town staff before a scheduled public hearing. That's the end of my motion, and I don't think that affects any pro- profits that are on the table now. However, if we do vote for this, it would affect future profits by Mr. Beltwood or any other, the way I understand it. So I've made the motion.
May I ask a question before you ask for a second?
Well, let's have it seconded or not, we've been discussing. So Mr. Payne has made a motion, is there a second?
I'm not interested in that.
Okay, and now we will have discussion.
The, I'm formulating my words, I apologize. Um, the legal requirement for the, can, the community, the, the town to review before, before we can hold a public forum, the public has to be able to review the proffers. Is there, and again, Jim isn't here, is there a legal timeframe? We have to give them five days, we have to give them ten business days, like what? What, what does, you know, proper time to review the proffers?
Okay, um, choosing my words carefully and will follow up on all of this to, to check on legality. As I unders- as I understand this timeframe now, this could work. My obligation to the public generally on meetings is to post everything with the agenda three business days prior to the meeting. That's why you get your agendas on the Wednesday or the Thursday before the Monday meeting. That's the legal requirement that I'm meeting when I do that. And that includes the agenda, my staff work, the notice on the door, the posting on the website. Um, in addition to that, there's notice of a public hearing, like we described earlier in the meeting. The newspaper ads, the notice on the website. Depending what it is, I have to send mail to the adjacent property owners. Those don't have to go into a ton of detail about the project. And they don't have to go into a ton of detail about the progress. It suffices to say there is a rezoning application about this property. It's complicated. If you wanna ask us, all the documents are here at the office. And that includes the proper statement and the analysis. So, if this motion passed, what it would do for us, I have this fourteen day deadline. A proffer could come in on T minus fourteen. I'd have ten, eleven days to do the analysis, which I owe to the applicant. I have to do, I have to analyze the proper once it's submitted. And then, once that was completed, that could go in the agenda and staff report and be sent. What I would have to be careful to do with our other agenda item is make sure that whatever we advertised on the public hearing said there are proffers, but not specify what the proffers are, so that we didn't get crossways by a, a last minute change of proffer.
Matt, Matt, a question for you or something else. I, I haven't, do you know what the county's expectation is for proffer deadline?
No.
So just, just to back to this, maybe I would just say this as a council. Y'all realize we are going on whatever crazy idea that our fellow counselor has on the agenda.
I, I, I do not appreciate your tone, Mr. Risco. I do not appreciate your tone.
And I appreciate the.
That's uh, You're in the end, you're able to get the little.
That's fine. I'm simply saying that we would be wise as a town council to have the opportunity to hear from our attorney and.
Like, like we did last Friday?
For some reason, for some reason, we don't want to do that. So in other words, we all become lawyers and we all understand proper law. I mean, I don't.
Yeah, nobody is saying that.
That's what we're, that's being insinuated. But I mean, I'm not.
Nothing is simulated, we are all lawyers.
Let's do one at a time, please.
My uh, I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to having a, a framework for rocks. And for example, other people who do it have it. I am hesitant about voting on it without Jim's feedback. I, I would like our town attorney to provide feedback about how best to do that, look at what the county does. I think all of those things, because we are gonna do something, we should do it in Atlanta, I think, I won't know about it. Um, and that people are doing business around here, so I'm, again, not opposed to it. Um, but I would, I would like to have some more.
Well, we could also do something and then, and, and he could bet it and, and say, hey, you know, this, this, and then we could resend it next time, say.
No, that's, you don't do, you don't pass the thing and resend it back.
There are many other localities that have this, you know.
No, you, you, you pass the thing, it works. And so you work through a thing until it's right. And then you vote on it, and then you don't have to then back and forth, we have this and then we don't have this.
Well, Mr. Bullock, you said the other day in an email, I believe, that uh, by changing the, the um, workshop to a special meeting was confusing. You remember that you said that?
I did.
And what was actually confusing was the fact that they submitted profits at the eleventh hour. This would eliminate that confusion. That's all I'm trying to do.
And I'm not, and I'm not disagreeing with you, that we should have a proper process. All I'm saying is that I, I want properly talked through what the county does, get our attorney's feedback on the best way to do it, so that we're not approving something and then taking something back and then approving something different. I have no problem with the proper process. I like things moving in an orderly manner. So that's good with me. Um, so I think it's a good discussion and I'm, and I'm certainly open to having a, a proper thing in place. I just don't feel it tonight's the night to make a decision.
With this, like I said, uh, in my research, I'm a lawyer, but I saw where there are many, many other localities that have a similar provision.
Yeah.
So, you know, we ain't the first ones. So I, I still make that motion.
Any other comments?
I, I just wanted to speak to the public here and the public who will hear us and I, I would agree with what Mr. Bullock said. I don't even necessarily have an objection to two weeks if I had a lawyer's coming to our, our town to be advised. And one of the things I've learned from twelve years on town council, there are many, many times we don't need a lawyer and there are many times we do, this is absolutely one that we do. And to make a decision knowingly that we all know what the county does, so we, we know that. And we don't know what our town attorney thinks, even though last time he's the one who did the research and told us the policy needed to stop. I would, I would be concerned again that uh, it seems ill advised policy.
Where is our attorney? This? I have a question. I don't have any information. I don't know that it is. If you have something personal going on or something, but it seems like it'd be good to have up here.
Yes, it, I'm afraid of one. It, it has, it has been his long custom to attend at the work session time frame of the month and not at the business meeting time of the month. Um, so we, we had his consultation for the month of the last meeting.
If this would have been a agenda. I think, I think it would be good, I think he just needs to be there.
Yeah.
I think there are too many questions that are coming up for him not, not to be present. Um, is kind of, I mean, we're just probably, so we just don't have the information we need. So I, I would ask him that he's just kind of here.
Can we find at least some middle ground here and make a motion, and I'm not making one yet, I don't know what your business.
Sorry, one of the.
Make a motion to get something from Echelon that's gonna say they're not gonna, you know, maybe put them into it for themselves, it's not going to add anything but for the next public hearing or give them a deadline or the deadline that they wanna work with. They might not legally find us or, you know, put us in a sticky situation, but I would like something, you're fairly embarrassed here. When we had, you know, huge turnout for our town and said, you know, thanks, but I, I don't want to repeat that and I don't think Echelon has an issue repeating that. And, you know, your business, that's.
My gosh, that I believe is not a move.
Even if it's not a legal action, even if it's not a legal action, and I think there is wisdom in what you're saying and you as well as Risco. But I do not want to just say, okay, there's wisdom in that, you know, we shouldn't do it and then just come out of here empty handed. I think we can come out here with something that's effective, at least for the goal that we're all trying to meet here, which is protecting the town. And, and, you know, making them commit to a deadline. And I think that's, that's you, I agree. We can be all on that.
Okay, any other discussion?
Um, a big one, um, Mr. Payne, could I offer a, a technical note on your, on your motion? Um, I think the, the fourteen day deadline on proper submission is clear, but, but deadline before what? So could I offer fourteen days before a properly noticed public hearing?
That's, yeah, that was my scheduled public hearing. Do you want to say promptly noticed, that would be fine.
Yeah, I, I think we would be in, if, if we were in trouble at all, I think we'd be in bad trouble if we started setting a different deadline for every developer that came before us. And I think two weeks is uh, we're, since we don't have a policy on this. Uh, I, I personally don't see anything wrong with having a policy that says two weeks before a public hearing. There's a deadline to submit profits. And I think that would, yeah. It'd be bad for any developer that came before. I just, I, you know, I, I understand what, what, what's, but anyway, uh, you can't. Everybody talks about spot zoning, where you can't spot or if somebody.
Good.
If somebody ordered a different, but it's okay. Uh, if there's no further discussion, we have word.
Well, Mr. Payne, the one thing I would say again about this is, as if you may notice it was added on, if, if this would have been on the agenda, this had been on a printed agenda, I think it's fairly clear we could have had Mr. Bullock here, but without it on a printed agenda and adding it late, again, I think it's bad.
I understand your point, you and, and if we're, if we're doing something wrong, we'll hear about it. The motion is for two week deadline before, for a proffer to be submitted by a developer prior to a public hearing. So that is the motion, it's been seconded and it's been discussed, it's on the link, so I would ask the court to call public.
Uh, Besset?
Yes.
Bullock?
No.
Frisco?
No.
Hines?
No.
Highsmith?
Yeah. I. Yes.
Payne?
Yes.
We're at three thirty. Uh, Mayor?
United States? Uh, what happens if we have a tabo of United States?
Uh, motion fails if it doesn't have a majority.
Then it fails.
I haven't voted yet.
Oh, I guess so. Sorry, I forgot about this.
Uh, uh, you know, I, I really, I, I don't know, I'm not passionate about which way to go on this, but I do like the idea of setting a deadline so that everybody stays under the same rules. So with that being said, I will vote. I will motion fast.
Thank you, man. Motion gets.
Now, we need to go back to item A and call the public hearing on this thing. We had talked last, in, if you refer to your minutes on the twenty first of November, we talked about having the public hearing, we talked about it. We talked about calling for a public hearing on January seventeenth. Today is just the, uh, what is today?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, oh, okay, that's, that's a month away. And if we notify the developer tomorrow that we have a new rule for which he goes play by, he has three weeks basically to get any other problems, you know, maybe he wants to deliver to us. And that's fair. Don't you think that's fair? I think it's fair. Um, then we can have our, as we discussed, we can have our public hearing and vote on it on January seventeenth, which is a Tuesday before Martin Luther King Day.
That are the, the public session?
Yes, that's a regularly scheduled council meeting.
I'd like to do it before that, and I'd like to not have it on the same days of our meeting, because I just think that's confusing. I think a separate designated time for the public hearing. So there's, you know, we don't have.
We can have a public hearing, we don't have to vote on it, right?
No, but I'd just like to have it, have nothing else on the agenda that night. I, I'd rather have, I'd rather have it earlier than later too.
Too, too much stuff to uh, deal with.
Well, I mean, in terms of timing, we, we've asked for, we're gonna get a, a proper evaluation. And I don't wanna move before we have all the information. We keep getting in trouble not having enough information or enough feedback. And so I don't wanna be in a, another setting where you've got to ask for more information. Okay, so I think the seventeenth for a regular public session fits with how we, how we do. Um, the other thing I do wanna mention in terms of additional information, um, Kevin Quick, when he made his comment, and you brought up tonight, Bill, the independent uh, financial impact analysis. So Kevin mentioned that he, he felt it was uncommon that a town would do the bone finance impact analysis alone. Um, this is also a kind of situation where I, I feel good about Matt's analysis. That being said, um, you know, I don't wanna go into our work session to discuss it or our public hearing um, and have people say, well, how, how do you know the impact on the town? You just had your own town staff do it. Um, I would be comfortable exploring an independent financial impact analysis um, to add on to the one that Matt has provided, if you all feel like that would give us another valid data point for discussing the permit.
But that is commonly done for large industrial projects. You get sort of a pro and con from, from an economist of here's how many jobs come from the property and here's the first and second order economic impact. And over here is the impact on town services, both immediate and anticipated. And here's why this job, usually the result is here's why this job creation is good. Both immediate and anticipated, and here's why this job, usually the result is here's why this job creation is good for the community. And here's how much subsidy would be in order for you to land this factory, so a a city can throw. Hundreds of thousand dollars at a manufacturing plant because they know that's gonna pay off. And they don't get that incentive number out of nowhere, they know that their economic impact is gonna be justified down the road, so plenty of those forensic. And they are better at that than me.
Let me ask you, uh, Matt, let's prove it. Everything we have to do. Is there any way we could do this on the ninth of January?
Yeah, I'd rather do it ninth or the twelfth.
And the reason I say that is because, um, yes, um, we did not have a workshop, and it's usually held on Monday. A town meeting is usually held on Monday, we didn't have a workshop last time because I had made a motion to have a special hearing. And look at, we had standard room only, you know. So maybe they thought it was a good idea, too, I like to have that same punch back.
Well, I think I think they're gonna come back whether we have. I I have no worries about people showing up for that public hearing whenever we have. But I want, I we have not at the council talked about this thing, and that's really, like I said, my, you know, that's been sort of the the. Of this process, you know, we talk about, you know, we have a meals tax rate in this town that is four point five percent. We might be the only municipality in the country that has a a four point five percent meal package, as we talked about.
That's why I eat you.
Yeah, exactly. Because six people sat around the table for probably three months talking about the budget, where you're gonna land. This thing, imagine an impact on the future of this town, we haven't talked about it yet together. And I want us to have a session, a work session. Where we talk through the staff report, the planning commission report, and we do it at the table, because that environment is a lot better for talking. This environment, we're up here, it's back and forth, and you're responding, and you're mostly just sort of like taking information, and then. By the time you get to the end, you're collecting yourself, I I really think that when we're at the table, we do our best work. And so that that's why I want us to have a work session in January, go through the staff report, talk about what's in it. And respond for ourselves to concerns from the community, because some of the answers are already here, we've already got.
Well, while we're all here, you could you could have a. You could have a work session prior to you, seven o'clock meeting, or you could have one afterwards, have a work session anytime.
Let's do eleventh or twelfth, how about that, that we have a work session on the ninth. And then we we're fresh, eleventh and twelfth, we can have the people come.
I just don't know why the three days make a difference.
I don't wanna do it regularly, I mean, I think that's silly to put it on, we got other business to take care of.
Yeah, we voted for the birdhouse during a regular session.
Yeah, that I think that was mistaken. But I like to, I like to keep it designated for that and that alone, so it's not, you know. You know, you're gonna have to prepare for those kind of things, I I got prepared for all those, I I'd rather not do it. I like to get it right, I like to get it done.
Question, Kim, could January nine four?
It it would, it would comply with the proper deadline that you previously.
So it could work. Okay, um.
I'd like. We haven't discussed my question.
Okay.
Do we want an independent financial impact analysis?
If it can be done with the word whatever.
It could be done before, yeah, they should have done that a long time ago.
This is what I'm asking.
If it could be done before, it'd be great.
I want us to make an informed decision, so when people get out here, and they say you have not done your due diligence, affecting the financial impact. I want us all to say, no, we have done our due diligence for the financial impact analysis, and we try to start that report.
Let's pull it, Mr. John.
Good, I know it is, I trust it, so I don't need one, but I'm at the stage because a member of our own government services stood up here. And said you should have, and you just.
Well, the thing is that they they should have done one, it's another, it's another irresponsible. Uh, item for the uh, this developer, they they haven't followed through on that, they did that in other towns, they actually did impact, they didn't do it here. They're they but they're railroad in this thing through, and they uh, they didn't do that, and they've cut corners. And I'm real disappointed that they didn't do that, because they did, I think they did that in Winchester or other places. And they and they paid for it, they paid for it.
Could we have that report before? The. Before we keep talking about it. If, say, we go on the ninth or the seventeenth, could we have somebody else? Draft that report and have it presented to us and have us, give us enough time to review it before the public hearing happens, is it even a possibility?
More time you allow for it, the easier it'll be to get it done.
Could it be done by the seventeenth?
Or the twelfth?
They can, they can hustle, I can hustle. If you do that, I'd I'd like to, I'd like to look at the budget and set a max price, so I can, I can do an emergency procurement, and if you say. You know, this analysis is worth eight thousand dollars. Get it done in a month.
Is that realistic, is that what we're lucky had eight thousand?
I've seen these, but I haven't commissioned, I don't know what it costs.
So we're we're talking about some stuff that we have no idea what it's gonna cost, or if it could even reasonably be done in time.
The one thing I would say, my 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 only concern, my only concern. Is that we can make an informed decision, so that we try to make max numbers are correct. So when we do talk about the financial impact, we're saying, okay, this is what the financial impact is of this plan. I'm I'm good with that, I just wanna make sure that when we're talking about the numbers, we feel good about it, and then we have accurate information.
I agree.
Okay, yeah.
Oh, my my fiscal's done, my fiscal's done. And I. I I hear um, Mr. Quick in particular, and and his and his critique of it. And Mr. Jenkins had some different information on police impacts, um, which she prepared, and I respect that as the. Direction in a more. In in a larger police department, there are lots of reasons you could want a larger police department. I I stand by those numbers as the best that I can do. And I. I think you might get. More detail on the nature of the impact, but I think the the basic outline of it, that it is. A small but positive good thing for the town, I have high confidence that that would.
I really may ask you. The applicant submitted these proffers. There was actually one because it stayed old, and so that could just one profit, two sections. If any applicant submits. You know, a a profit, or they have a proposal, let's say tiger fuel, let's say their blood and pride, maybe even an expansion. Of the thirty six, you never know. And of course, it would depend on the situation, but. If you had a a week to look at that. Just a profit at a proposal could be a whole lot of their ballgame, but then if something pops up like this, let's say last last Monday. This was the first time he'd heard about a new problem, could you have the information for us tonight?
We've. Mr. Bulling and I have gotten better at this in the past two weeks, we know this law a lot better than we did. The proffers vary in complexity. For the for the relatively simple ones that we've gotten recently, um, on this. I feel good that. I, if. If I had had another half a day, I I I could have had this proper analysis for you now, it's not quite ready, it's close. In the in the future. I think a week will suffice for the simple ones, so I I don't, I don't feel bad about from. Today to the seventeenth. And tell our applicant, we've got a two week deadline, crunch your numbers voluntarily, make any changes that you wanna make. Here's my analysis on your previous one. But I need it, I need it all, close the business on the third. And I. I feel that's fair.
Okay. But we just, you know, we just made a, you know, a two week. You know, rule was undoubtedly stock effect. You know, that one, because these are submitted, now change.
Yes.
We have to be. Uh, offered two weeks prior.
That's right.
That's all. And we're basing that on your analysis, and you feel safe with the analysis, okay, okay, having said that, and having. Matt's tough morning. Um, I'd like to make a motion to allow town staff. Seven days from the date of submission to review an applicant's. Proposed profits and make a recommendation to council. Uh, end the motion, and that can be worked in tandem with the town attorney. You've already heard him say he would feel safe. So that's my motion, I'll repeat it if you need me to. Let me repeat. This motion is to allow town staff seven days from the date of submission to review an applicant's proposed profits and make a recommendation to council. End the motion and. I'd like to stress the importance of working with town attorney.
You've heard the motion, is there a second?
You mean, oh. You mean require? Like it has to be done by seven.
Yes.
Five businesses. Five business days.
No, one week, seven days. Which would be probably five business days, but you started off.
I I'm leery to say yes to that. They could give you something on December twenty third, they could, you know, like. Five business days I'm okay with. If if something. Came to that on the twenty third of December, yeah, something like that, I just. Don't think.
Well, remember, just based on the last vote, we had about fifteen minutes ago, they've gotta do a two weeks prior to the special hearing.
I understand that. But requiring. Staff to 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 have no, to say seven days no matter what. I'm not okay with. Saying five business days could be a very different. Thing. Five business days I'm a little more comfortable with. Because in those seven days, you might have a four day weekend or holidays, or you know, something like that. And and there's, there's no wiggle room in there. To to account for that.
Would you be comfortable with five business days?
Respectfully, sir, no, in the um. At in what we were just saying before, I I said, when the proffer looks as it did, where there are. Two sentence statements, that is gone fine, if they continue to be like that, we're fine. The the proffer packages that of moral accounting receives can be much more complicated. Um, and could 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 be well beyond this. So, I. I don't wanna over promise on something that's this sensitive and ridiculous.
I was gonna, Matt, I was gonna follow up on that, on that point, I. Got to it with your response there, but. There's a realm of these things, they're not all the same, and. Again, we're having this conversation without town attorney, and I do think it'd be wise if we had it with the town attorney.
I I agree, um, it all needs the. Proper has to be in, Matt still has to do the work anyway in a timely manner to get it to us. By the. Public hearing, whatever it happens to be, so ultimately, we'll we'll get the information when we need it. So I don't know if this executive oversight would help, would help us, I think the proffer, like I said, proper thing is a good idea in terms of timeline. It didn't work because our attorney's not here, but um, but I think that that at least sets it up with a flexible window. And since we at the town are just getting into the habit of dealing with these things, I think it'd be a good idea to say, okay, let's try a proper window. See how that feels and works. And then, you know, if there's additional, excuse me, frameworks we wanna add, we could add them later.
And that might be the way to go about it, too, if you're giving a short window, you receiving it, the council picking, you know. An appropriate timeline before whatever's coming up. I don't know if that's a good way to do that.
I mean, to be honest with you, I don't even know what a proper assessment is. I feel like I'm talking about stuff up here, and I don't even know what I'm talking about.
Would uh, would counsel, this is the discussion, I'll still got the motion on the floor. Would you be comfortable with seven business days?
No, I I'm not comfortable with any with any further sort of. Specifics about how we work with this at this time.
They've got two weeks, which essentially means that Matt has less than two weeks.
I think you you did take what Matt said seriously, because. As we mentioned earlier, the town has never had. Pretty much real with the proffers about anything. And. I think the meetings with the proffers were really convoluted and and far out, but it was a proffer, so. The staff had to work for a considerable number of hours just to make it to the table. And. Sort of agreeing with Zach. I think we probably should have some. We will guide this with bullying, who would set a. Any constraints on our staff, uh, we already talked about that, they. Have trouble getting getting admits from previous meeting out in town to satisfy everybody, so now we're gonna lay this on top of them, too. And give them five or seven days to do a thorough research of a proffer and then make a presentation. It's either sometimes gonna be real easy, or it's sometimes not gonna be possible. That's something we could add later. Depending on what comes up later. And it has not been seconded. So I'll ask if there was a second, which would change motion in the original motion.
What was it again? Uh, my motion is to allow town staff, seven days from the date of submission to review. An applicant's proposed profits and make a recommendation to council.
Yeah, this is a motion. You really don't even need to hear a second for you guys.
I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Heisman says second, now is there any further discussion? That has not already been voiced. I'll ask the court to call the.
That's it?
No.
Bullock?
No.
Frisco?
No.
Hines?
No.
Heisman?
Hi.
Payne?
Yes.
Now, let's talk about February. February, that's what I was thinking, and uh, if we're, if if the third, Tuesday the third is deadline for any additional proffers to be submitted. Can we on the ninth for our work session? Part of that work session time, discuss everything we know about this project as a group around the table. And then have a public hearing on our regular medium on the seventeenth. And after the public hearing, we can always defer the vote on that to the next week if we want to, but we need to talk about it more. That's the timeline, I I would. Think would work. Good for us getting the information, discussing the information, having the public come in and give their information again. And either vote on it that night at the seventeenth, or select a day the next week for a special session where our only agenda item will be to vote on. The proposal. That way it was done in January and over with, one way or the other.
Would you be opposed, anyone, to do a special session that week after tonight, or that week? They got to the twelfth and go with saying.
I like the twelfth myself, I just think it's spread our mind well. And we're getting done.
What it would be on, you know, that Wednesday or even the Friday.
Wait, say that again?
The town's pretty. A lot of people are pretty occupied on Thursdays, but from what I've noticed, your tenants might not.
People know that we're gonna meet on the third Monday, and they know this town, third Monday is holiday, and there will be public hours that are here, gonna be all Tuesday the seventeenth, and. I think people will come out on Tuesday the seventeenth, we will hear them, we can vote. That night if we want to, or we can set another time to vote.
I'd like to make decisions.
So I'd like to make a motion that we have a public hearing for this on January seventeenth.
I'll make a motion, we have our public hearing. On the reselling special use permit, that's on research data, the bridge street on Tuesday, January seventeen.
Is there a second? Frisco? You're just waiting at somebody or?
I'll second it.
Sorry, it felt like we all just.
Now, this one's open for discussion.
I I'll, all I was gonna say is. That seems a couple, for a couple reasons, so if we go with the seventeen. Be better if it was the sixteenth, but we can't do it that way, it's national holiday, seventeenth is our normal meeting. It also gives, now that we have this new policy of two weeks, gives the third for the, if for some reason.
For the, if for some reason that someone wants to do something unreasonable, that they have. Two weeks, they have a little bit of time, if you do have Christmas and New Year's coming, most people. Do do things, if people travel, if things happen, also would like to have the citizens of Scottville have Christmas and New Years and. So to me, long-term, it is, I think the seventeenth makes sense. It's not complicated.
Yeah, I like to uh make, if we do it the seventeenth, that there's nothing on agenda, uh except the public hearing. That's what we, that's what actually happened last, that's what, that's what happened last time, we all just, we all just, we tabled it. Make it nothing there except designated for the public hearing.
Unless there's some sort of emergency action that needs to be taken, we'll try to limit.
We could have a regular, either skip that meeting or do the next week.
So, that that works, sir, I'm not aware of any major staff work coming up. Um this this work will take a lot of the staff.
The motion that has been made and seconded is for the public hearing on the eight hundred first street. Project to occur on the evening of Tuesday, seventeenth of January at seven P M. After which we will decide whether we want to vote on it that evening or set another date. Later on in the week or the following week to actually vote on. It's been discussed, is there any more discussion? Clerk, will you call the vote?
That's it? Bullet?
Yes.
Frisco?
Hi.
Hines?
Yes.
Ice?
Hi.
Hey?
No.
Thank you. Then we can use the ninth to discuss uh. Just if they want to. And if we have to meet another time before the seventeenth to continue our discussion on this eight hundred first street, we've got plenty of days. There to do that too.
Mister Mayor, just to, just to follow up on what Mister Buller, uh just just the point about the ninth. Uh do you think that either the ninth or sometime back week, it'd be a time that would be good for us? As a council to talk, that's all.
See, that that will be our number one agenda item for our work session. And then we'll see if there's anything else we need to get on. And if we need to reconvene at the end of the day that week to continue discussion, we can do that. But we should be back and push the certification part of it.
Could I share one other related to our previous conversation about the? The strategic planning and goal setting and the the timing for that. When when the thought first crossed my mind, I thought January would be a good time to do it, new new year, goal setting prior to budgets. Do you anticipate? Being in a place for your governance and emotionally that? Is is a is a facilitation after this event, like one of these Saturdays? Gonna be beneficial or or might uh might a longer cooling off and do strategic planning in February or March? Be more advantageous?
I don't, Matt.
Yeah, I was gonna just say, I I think if we can get this eight hundred first street all the way in January, let's just take a little couple of weeks to breathe and then do this other one.
When when's the annual meeting? When's the annual meeting?
We've, we have done that in the past as the. The third Monday in January, I'm sorry, in July, as the, when we were commencing new terms. Yeah, like so the um if the if the mayor had stated the town remarks, it would be at that time, it's your organizational meeting for adjusting committees and things like that. Um with the change in the terms, uh new council members take office in January now. Um so I sent the reminder with the clerk about hopes of office for the three of you starting new terms, that needs to happen before January first.
Or January first?
Yes.
But I read that it's supposed to be in January.
Uh yes, so that.
Say code.
So the um the the seventh could be there for. Organizing as well, but I I don't see any harm in it um waiting to, what black committee assignments and that. What's your question?
I'm just thinking, I just wanna, you know, summarize if you would, on that. We will have a recommendation on the eighth on first street prior to the properly advertised public here.
Yes, sir, I'll I'll endeavor in my staff reports to bring all of our information to the other. Including the proper analysis, everything the planning commission saw, the results of all of our public input. The applicant is doing these community meetings now, so I'll keep an eye on those and try to get some notes on and have everything for you. For this work session, so that you can have all the information. I, when when I've done my best staff work, nobody regrets their vote in the months after they go. Because you were fully informed and you knew your votes.
Anything else on this matter? Heading into the final stretch, maybe we'll be out of the tunnel by any. Anything else on anybody's mind, what else is here?
One quick question. Yes, ma'am, for Matt who has been in the hot seat so bad tonight, I apologize, it's the last question. Because I don't know what a proffer analysis is, this is probably gonna be answered when we see it, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. The flood pumps. Flood pumps. Is it additional, is it replacing, what what exactly are they? For, and are they need, like if they're replacements, do we, do we need replacements, but? I don't know what to think too much about this proffer, only because I have no idea. The the effect it will have on the town.
What do we currently get from Alamo County for?
Seventeen, town.
So so it's sort of being, it's kind of always been seventeen.
It's got a slight inflation.
I I used to volunteer on the. Have you ever been in a farmhouse?
No.
Only take a tour sometimes, because it's uh it's real interesting, it's three great big caterpillar tractor engines. That run three, where do you think fifteen, what is it, fifty thousand gallons a minute pumping pumps? And uh normally they can run it with one, but sometimes you have to do two or three to pump all the water back out in the river. And those pumps are getting old. And town is looking at sometime in foreseeable future having to replace some of these pumps. And I guess that's where uh the airport people, you know. Learned that information and uh came up with the problem.
My, yeah, my. My question, I mean foreseeable future. Fifty years, I like, I I just, I I feel like they they offer this proffer without. I don't know, I feel like I don't have the information that I would like to have.
It's it's awkward for sure, um I I think Mister Payne did a really good job walking through the law and the standards of it. My my evaluation is along with same same lines, here's what the law says, here's what we got, do they match?
Yeah, I understand all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
What I wanna know is, do we need? Is 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 the proffer a good deal? I mean, do we need new? Like twenty years from now, maybe?
I think the money goes in your account and then you could use ten years from now. You don't have to replace it now.
That's that's right, and I can, I guess I can.
No, it's not, it's it's contingent, the the idea is for the developer, see this proffer, even though it was two paragraphs, it's one proffer. But it says or. The proffer says in nutshell, um that actually I was gonna talk to Alamo County. Alamo County will determine what kind of tax relief they'll give, actually long, and they'll pass it along to Scottsville, does that sound right?
More or less, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so what we have there, uh Alamo County is gonna tell the town of Scottsville. How much money are we gonna get to provide for the additional services? If they make that decision, they may say, no, we don't want any part of it. There's nothing tangible, there's nothing of.
I thought I just gave money.
You know, it's just a a agreement, an idea to talk to Alamo County. And that, you know, there's nothing material there, it's not a stoplight.
And Matt as well, if you don't mind picking your brandy, you could just fall apart and you probably don't have any idea what the cost of pumps are without your debt, but. A hundred thousand seems to be like replacing three pumps of that size, am I off on that?
Ten years ago, it might have been enough, but what these heavy equipment prices have done, I wouldn't wanna guarantee you that it was all free now.
That that being said, a hundred thousand dollars, I think about that, we don't, you know, right now in our reserve, we have a hundred and fifty and then a hundred and fifty and the other one. So that's what basically you now get another, so that would be effectively another check for a third pump. The other thing in. You know, again, I I wanna say this related, the tip thing is also important to discuss. Because that's a kind of payment from the county to the town, the difference between what they're gonna charge in affordable rents versus the market rate. And so we get that gap, that comes to the town over a period of ten years or whatever. And that will could actually very much be much more than a hundred thousand dollars over that, over uh the ten years that they're gonna have it in place. So actually the tip would be maybe the better deal for us over the long term, because that's ongoing revenue. Um and so I think these are the kinds of things that we'll talk through in our work session.
Um but besides, you you had asked about um how urgent is that need? Council in work sessions, the whole time I've worked here, has has acknowledged that those pumps are thirty years old, they're low hours, but old machinery. We maintain them regularly, but we did have one incident in town where the routine maintenance slipped and they overheated and they didn't work the way they needed to. Um so we, we don't have a useful life on them. Um it's a little borrowed time is too strong of a phrase, I it's not. They're not obsolete and they they work well when they're fully maintained and properly operated, there's no problem in that. Um but I I don't know how long they're gonna last and they're essential to our safety. So I think it would behoove us to be ready to replace them as soon as it became necessary. And that's been the thrust of uh council conversations in the past is, how do we make sure that we are ready? To take this emergency action if ever we need it, you don't wanna spend this kind of big ticket money until it's really necessary.
And that's where where Matt and uh the town attorney really have to get together because. Section four of that code that I quoted last week said. Repair and maintenance of a facility offsite is not allowed. So they're off, they may be offering something that. You know, is improper.
And that's, that's that's the deep back logic for it.
And that's all you're gonna get, by the way. Yeah, unless the negotiations go through with Alamo County and, you know, southern Alamo, Scottsville. Uh we've got a history with Alamo County, we don't get much.
But regardless of whether or not. Alamo. Does attack sharing with us. The proffer itself, it sounds like was.
If Alamo says no way, then um. You develop a says, town gets a hundred thousand dollars for new pumps.
But 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 we must not accept an unreasonable proffer.
Yeah, exactly.
If it fails this test, I will say this is unreasonable, we will not accept it.
That sounds good.
Anything else? Thank you everybody for their attention, for their comments. And I hope everybody has a good holiday, whatever you uh happen to deserve. And we'll see you in the new year, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yep, well, I mean, go go on Google.